I don't know what's going on. I'm not sure.
Oh, no.
Just one speaker.
One speaker? All right. Good morning. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the school board's special meeting on Friday, November 22nd. The board will be voting on the recommendation for the Sky Ranch attendance boundaries adjustment. Would you please rise, take off your hat, if you're wearing one, silence your cell phone, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we move forward, first thing on the agenda is the hearing of citizens. Before we start, I'll make a quick comment. At the other night at the board meeting, there was a, one of the speakers at the end had brought up a court case, a recent appellate case in reference to that the appellate court overruled the trials court in reference to public comment at meetings. Unfortunately, I was remiss to that, to ultimately what the appellate court had stated and that I had interfered in reference to her comments, which was something that I should not have done based on the court ruling. So with that, I have made an apology to the, to the speaker that had come. I explained to them that we will be adjusting the policy immediately. I spoke to Mr. Dugan as well as the superintendent. As the appellate law basically now becomes case law in reference to public speaking, we'll be working on and adjusting it. I know that they're already working on it with Ms. Parent, Mr. Parento. So with that, as I had made an apology and that, you know, the First Amendment is something that is very, very, I look at to be, one of the things that my career was based on is the First Amendment, and I was remiss by interceding in reference to that. I was trying to get some decorum, and as I stated, that I was not correct in my assessment of what was being said. So with that, if I make an apology because I do something wrong, I will always do it quickly, and I'll make sure that people know that because that's the person that I am, is I do try to lead with that. So with that, as we move forward, we'll be addressing that, as well as I've talked to the superintendent, as well as council. We'll be doing a workshop reference to the changes into the law because our policy basically at this point is not in compliance with it. So we'll be changing the policy reference to public speaking as we move forward, as well as we are going to be doing a, doing a workshop in reference to Robert's Rules, functioning, basically how to operate as a board, as well as the public speaking comments and being able to make sure that we're all on the same page as the legislative changes. So with that, I apologize, and we will move forward with public comments. So stating that, if we would have our only card that we have today, if you would please come up to the podium, is Nick Conacella. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. I have never been to a school board meeting in my entire life, and I'm not here to complain. I'm not here to cast ill will. I'm here as the president of our homeowner association, that a neighbor brought to me concern over redistricting, and I thought, well, maybe I should figure out what's going on. So I have two comments, and just for general consideration. The first is how things are communicated that have a significant impact on the homeowners of Sarasota County. So I'm a retiree, like many people down here. I are, my children are grown grandchildren, not here, they'll never be a part of the Florida school district, yet, and I'm pretty plugged in. I've spoken at a number of commission meetings, county commission meetings, yet this popped up on radar, my radar screen because my neighbor told me, there's something wrong with redistricting. It could affect our property values. Do you know what's going on? And my answer is no. And it just came as a surprise. So if there's any way that it could be communicated to the greater good, other than I know your webpage was updated, it's all there, but for those of us that don't have children, and that's many of us, going to the webpage, and I will in the future, but there's got to be a better way. So something for consideration to get the information out to the masses so that we can plug in with the process to make sure that we're, we're all part of this, because it's a community and we are all part of this. And the second comment I have is, just briefly looking through the package, the very first page, and my background is, I built, operated, and managed nuclear power plants at a senior level. So I'm used to gap analysis, impact statement, cost benefit analysis, my whole career. I also worked for the Nuclear Regulatory Commission and was involved in rulemaking. So anytime something changes, all the impact analysis that needs to go along with that. So I look at the executive summary right at the very front of your package, because as I said, I haven't been involved in the detail, and I may be off base, but I did want to share this. So I looked for the executive summary, and the gap analysis at the very beginning left a little bit to be desired. Now, when you go through a package, there's a lot more detail, and I'm sure you're going to discuss this today as part of your presentation, but I would expect at least a little more detail and what the gap is, and what, and what is specifically being done for closure and why. So it's just something for consideration. Thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion.
Thank you, sir. And we have Craig Moniglia here, is also with our direct communications, and we'll take that under consideration. And obviously, I know transparency of the board is, is very important, as communication is the key to that always. So thank you, sir. All right, moving forward, if we go ahead, Superintendent Connor, if you'll go ahead and proceed with your presentation, sir.
Thank you. So yes, we are here today for the adoption of the new attendance boundaries for Sky Ranch School. The new Sky Ranch School will be opening to pre-kindergarten through sixth grade, starting in August of 2025. We will phase in seventh graders in 2026 and eighth graders in 2027. This school has been planned for several years to accommodate the growth in the area and relieve overcapacity at Ashton, Lakeview, and Sarasota Middle. As outlined in school board policy 5.20, the district planning team convened a boundary advisory committee to assist in the development of the proposed boundary changes. The boundary advisory committee consisted of the principals, the teachers, and parents from the affected schools at Ashton, Lakeview, and Sarasota Middle. The boundary advisory committee and the district planning team met in April, May, and October to review and score feasible boundary options. The proposed boundaries recommended for Sky Ranch that will affect Ashton, Lakeview, and Sarasota Middle reflect the input of the boundary advisory committee as well as the district planning team. As you know, we recently held a workshop that went in depth regarding how the components and the factors related to what was considered. And we also did send out communication through the form of a letter that we mailed to our affected families regarding the proposed changes and advertising the public hearing that was held on Tuesday, which we held, and about this meeting. So the recommendation is scenario one from the boundary advisory committee, and that is presented to you today for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. As we move forward, we'd go ahead, and if we can get a Sky Ranch attendance boundary adjustment motion. Anyone with a motion? Ms. Marinelli?
I move to accept the recommendation of scenario one presented by the superintendent as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ziegler. If we could please have now discussion from the board members. Ms. Ziegler, go ahead.
I'll go first. I'm sorry about my voice, so I'll try to make it short, but I'm not usually succinct. First of all, I have to, my apologies to Mrs. Barker. I have to say that I've been on here for 10 years, and when I first started, that was the number one thing that everyone said you don't want to deal with is a, is a, is a redistricting. And then it's one of your first votes. And it's hard because, you know, and again, that was one of the hardest votes that was told to me as a board member. Because it impact, it's so deeply personal, it impacts families. It's not lost on me. I know it's not lost on board members, and I certainly know it's not lost on staff. And so, you know, the other night, I heard what was said, and I thank the gentleman for coming today. You know, one of the number one things that I have prioritized, and I am very proud of having seen such a change over the last decade in this district, and it comes to communication. But you know, it's easy for us to say, because we live, eat, breathe, and sleep this. Everyone else has their other lives, and they're going about it. And so it's really all about how do we reach them. And we're in a moment where there are a multitude of mediums in which we can do that, whether it be social media. I 100% agree with the sentiment, and I know our communications director also recognizes this, as well as our superintendent. People don't go to the school board website, usually just to say, hey, what's going on with the schools? It's usually that there's something that's leading them there, whether it be, like I said, a social media post. I know postcards were mailed out years, because this has been years in the making. But again, we eat, breathe, and sleep this, and we, I understand how busy people's lives are, and so it can feel overwhelming and like it just smacked you in the face. And that includes our families who attends Ashton. You know, Ashton has been overcapacity for years. And again, this is something we look at all the time, but it's not necessarily something that our families may think about, even though, I mean, it just, and it, so that I can understand, to be taken aback and the challenge. You know, I think that I, what we do is one thing, and then the perception, so we always have to balance that out, and making sure that we could be, you know, executing things, but if we're missing the mark, or if we, if there's a way that we can reflect and see how we can do better job, because we do have a handful of other schools reopening in the, in the future, that we can not only do, follow what we've done here, but, but go the extra mile, or what have you, to ensure that we are reaching families so that we can give them a heads up, and so they can prepare. Because people, I mean, I know for the last five years or so, I knew this was coming down the pipe, and I, we had a lot of people moving to this community, and when people would ask me which school, I say, just so you know, Ashton is bound to be redistricted, so if you're going in that, in that area. But I'm not talking to every single person. So I just want to share the sentiments that I understand as a parent, that decision. People buy homes based on where that school is, and what that school is, and the quality of that school. So that's not lost on me, and I know that this is not, it's not lost on the staff. I think there are a lot of clear calculations and very definitive rules that we have to look at. I think that while change is always hard for anybody, and the unknown is certainly what probably causes the most discomfort, I have absolute confidence that Ashton's community that has grown and thrived for years will continue to do so, and I believe that Sky Ranch will also have that opportunity. So my heartfelt appreciation is to the district administration, to the communication scene, because I know you guys did a really great job, and I know you always listen to what other opportunities you can do to try to reach people, because again, we understand that that's not what you wake up in the morning looking for. And so that, it pains me to hear that people were surprised by that. Lastly, I will say that one thing I think that, as a takeaway, is kind of thinking through this day today, is knowing that this was overcapacity. We have a handful of other schools that we've known, and these are things that we have to look at regularly. And knowing that we are a district of choice or state of choice, I think it might behoove us to, again, this would be going to the district website, but there could be push notifications from the, from social media, but illustrating every school and what their current capacity is, and making it in layman's terms, so people understand, like, hey, if you're a plus percent over, you're at risk. And so people understand that in a, in a very simple manner, because I think that we do have a lot of people who look to move in a neighborhood where our schools, and we have great school options. But I, it pains me, and I'm sure for everyone, to, to feel that anyone feels like the rug is being pulled without, out from under them. I will say I like the phasing in. At first, I didn't, but I think it actually accommodates a lot of, a lot of stability when, versus disruption. So for all that said, and I said, and I know it's long-winded, but it's hard, this is a big decision. But I don't want the comments and emails to go as if they were unheard. They're not. I understand that there's kind of a no-win situation in a lot of, a lot of these for, for some families. But anything we can do to make that transition as smooth as possible, I have the utmost confidence that our administration will do so. And I do, I thank you, I thank the committee, and I thank the administration for their support, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Ms. Ziegler. Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you, Mr. Anniels. I would like to echo what Mrs. Ziegler said. It is a very emotional time to have, you go to, start at one school, and then you move to another. And when I was an employee of the Sarasota County School District, I had experienced a few times when Sarasota was growing, and we built new schools, and one that was very traumatic is when Tatum Ridge was built, and that affected Brentwood Elementary and that population. And it was, it was traumatic for, for families and kids. But what was helped very much is that the new school made time to meet with parents, bring their children, bring their friends, so when they went to the new school, they weren't alone. So that's going to be something that I know, Mr. Connor, and the team is going to be working on, and Mrs. Hannan at Sky Ranch will, I'm assuming, have open houses for people to come. So before that first day, they will be comfortable as they can. They'll, they'll know where their room is, they'll know what the programs are, they'll get to see what the state-of-the-art school this is going to be. So I think it behooves us to recognize that this, this is, it is affecting people. I received so many emails, and I have to say, the majority of the emails were supportive of scenario one. Some, you know, it's going to be hard, but I think it's up to us to make that, the new school and that transition as open and welcoming as we can, but recognize that, that empathy for our students and families that it is affecting. And I also want to thank the comments from our speaker, because we're always open to how can we communicate better. So thank you.
Ms. Barker?
I think maybe I have sort of a unique perspective on this, because my family, in any scenario, will be redistricted to the new Sky Ranch School. So this is, this is deeply personal for me, and something that we've been thinking about for a very long time. So the first thing I have to say is thank you so much to the team who worked on this. Diane Comanati, I think we have been pestering you for four years, maybe now, with questions about this school. So a huge thank you to Diane, your team, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Kemp, Mr. Dumas, I know was involved. So I sat on the school advisory committee. My students currently go to Lakeview, which is also well overcapacity, just like Ashton. And my students have been in the portables there and, and had the challenges that go along with overcrowding at an elementary school. But I certainly, even with all that, as a parent, having seen all the data and feeling confident that I understand the data, it's still hard. It's always hard. You know, we had our own conversations as a family. Should we try to stay at Lakeview? Should we try to choice in? You know, one of my students has a disability, and Lakeview's been really great for him. So please understand that just on a personal note, as a parent, I, I deeply understand the challenges that are involved with switching schools and the upheaval that that brings. That said, it's my responsibility to make a decision that's in the best interest, not just of my family, but of the district as a whole. And I feel very confident, given the data that I have exhaustively researched, I've spoken with the principal at Ashton, I've spoken with the principal at Lakeview, I've spoken with parents and teachers and even students, because I'm a mom, right? And I, I will be supporting scenario one. I do believe it was very carefully come about. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. Let me just start by saying, Mrs. Barker, your voice is so, I'm just so excited to hear your view on this, because to me, that's what board work is about, and your voice of having children in the school district that would be personally effective is an important consideration, as I still ponder my vote. But thank you. I want to share, I've, I've had experiences about this, and I do agree that no matter what the outcome is, people are, some people are going to be happy, and some people are just not. And that goes along with being an elected official and having to make tough decisions sometimes. But I want to just share with you some of my concerns. I want to share it with the board. I think, I think you'll agree with some of them. I'm, I am concerned about the fact that the bus routes were ghost rides and AI-generated, and that I have concerns about kindergartners potentially being on a bus for a half an hour or longer. I, I feel that, that there is some, as a concern, that doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to vote yea or nay, or none of, I, I want to talk about concerns, make sure that the board and the school district pays attention to these concerns, and if those concerns become reality, what workarounds can we offer to mitigate some of those kinds of issues that may materialize? I am concerned that the change, and here's, here's what I see about Ashton. I see, and forgive me if you've heard some of this before, but there's been a lot of turnover at the landings. There's been a lot of upheaval, a lot of changes, and Ashton has had an A rating for a very long time. They weathered all of those changes, weathered all of those storms, weathered 139% capacity and have done, and they really exemplify a, a community of free and reduced lunch to upper-middle class, and really have thrived. And that's what I have heard a lot from parents, that they choiced into that environment, or moved into that environment, and they see that being taken away. And so I look at when we redistricted, and I wasn't here for that, Brentwood. It's taken a long time for Brentwood to kind of get back to its, its place again. And I want to make sure that if we, the decision that we make, again, we need to pay attention to things we heard from our community, and how to make sure that if, if Ashton needs additional help or support to get through these, these changes, or any school for that matter, that we, we provide them. So that, that's another concern of mine. I, I've spoken to families that get, that they're, they are getting a brand-new school and all these great opportunities, which by the way, was the way I started this conversation. If you have a choice to go there, it's an amazing school. I've been there. It's going to be state-of-the-art. It's unbelievable, and if you can go, go. But I've actually spoken to families that want to choice back to Ashton for whatever the reasons are. And one of the considerations I'd like the board and the school district to take, if people are choosing back into Ashton, I think the choice should include an automatic choice into Sarasota Middle, so they don't have to go through that again, because that's the way that the trajectory would be, so that the school district doesn't have to keep making those decisions. It's an automatic, the cohorts keep moving in that direction. If they choiced in, I think it should be one choice and have it go right to middle, through to middle school. I, I will tell you that from a communication standpoint, I shared this with Mr. Connor, I have never had a four-two vote, or four-one vote with the previous board, that wasn't generated from an, an outside agenda. When it came to something that the superintendent has suggested, it's always been a unanimous vote, because I, I trust the school district, I trust the administrators, I trust the programming. And so the communication piece is very real to me. I, I understood theoretically that the redistricting was going to happen, but when you talk about those conversations happening in May and June, that was the height of my campaign. I was, I was out doing my best to get back in this seat. I honestly didn't know that these conversations were taking place, and I think everybody in the school district knows that I attend community meetings where they're talking about the referendum or a listening tour. I go to those meetings, and had I known, I would have been there. And I didn't, and an actual administrator said to me, it was on the website. So I appreciate your feedback that it's on the website, and as Mrs. Ziegler points out, I, I don't think people just go there. We have to find a better way of getting these things out to the community and making sure that people know that people know, because that's, it's not a transparency issue, and I want to make sure that I'm very clear on this. People did not try to slip it under the radar. They thought they were communicating, they thought they were getting the word out. But everywhere I turned, including my own self, it wasn't appropriately communicated and we should own that. I still believe in the school district's research, I still believe in the decision that we're about to make. But I bring these concerns to the board and to the school district to make sure that the communication issue doesn't happen again, end of discussion. And number two, that we pay attention to what the community had said to us, whether concerns like the buses and like the decimation of how Ashton feels by 40% of it being redistricted out. So those are my concerns. I've shared my thoughts, I'm happy to cast a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Yeah, moving forward, let me give you some of the thoughts as I've extrapolated the data and I've looked into the different percentages and a lot of the occupancy. As a dad who had two students that went to Ashton and one that went to Lakeview and three that went to Sarasota Middle and three went to Riverview High School, thank you. As I move forward, I look at a few things. Number one is, it's absolutely overwhelming. I know the pride of the Ashton families and the volunteers there, because I was one. And there's no, nothing lesser than what they do for their school in that situation and that area, because it truly is remarkable. Number two, I saw the teachers, then they came here the other night and I heard them speak and I saw them, they came here in order to support. They have an amazing, amazing staff there, without any question. It's a great, tremendous staff. I also look at, as we move forward, I think that we need, and I agree with Mr. Edwards and Ms. Ziegler, pretty much everybody, one of the things that I would recommend, especially with the new high school at Welland Park, where we'll have to do the same process, is that town hall meetings from the very beginning, I know this has been a nine-month process, I know there were multiple scenarios that brought up that were also vetted out, just not the three that were presented. I believe there are four more that were out there that unfortunately the percentages were so low, we couldn't use them, is that I think then that town hall meetings and putting them out there, especially to the parents and the community members, as if you lived in a, you know, a community. Because I know, when I moved from Manatee County, when I was a deputy there, to Sarasota County, I moved specifically to be able to go to Ashton, Sarasota Middle and Riverview. So I understand that it's a huge thing for communities when stuff like this happens. I also look at the vehicular traffic over there at the sheriff's office and here is the police chief. The amount of students and parents that go there, that anybody who's been over there knows that Sarasota Middle and Ashton and Lakeview are bumper-to-bumper all of the time. It was never made for that kind of capacity. And that truly is an issue over there. The other thing that I also look at is I look in reference to the portables. You look at portables and you look at safety and security, portables are a whole unique situation, as Ms. Barker knows from the incident a couple of years ago. That is a whole different animal. It is a lot safer to be able to have children inside a solid building than to have them in portables, because there's just too many opportunities if bad things were going to happen. So I also look at that in both scenarios, one and two, both pretty much removes significant amounts of them, which is, I am grateful for. I also understand that the portables, I think 22 out of the 36 at Ashton are due to demolition this summer either way, based upon the length of time that they've been on campus, for more than 20 years. So also, we left to look at that in reference to the fiscal responsibility aspect and reference to the placement of those. I also look at, when I come down to this, is, I also had personal experience. When I was moved here with my parents, I was districted for Riverview. I lived north of Bee Ridge Road. My sister went to Sarasota High, because while I was going to Riverview, we got redistricted and so she went to Sarasota High, which is good for me, I didn't have to see my sister every day. But I got redistricted right in the middle and she went to Sarasota High. We didn't have a chance, we didn't get to grandfather then. Where you went is where you went. And then they moved it from Bee Ridge, north of Bee Ridge to Sarasota, then they moved it to Proctor. So there's been a lot of changes and it's never, never easy, it wasn't easy for my mom, because now how do you get two kids at two different schools? We both had to go and be there at the same time. So also, when I look at the percentages, because when you're ultimately looking at $115 million school, and this doesn't take, you know, the, ultimately, the parents and the families, the teachers, that's what's the most important part here, period. Beyond that, 100%, I support, you know, that their advocacy, I think, is exactly what this is about. That's why I make a suggestion and agree with Mr. Edwards in reference to the communication piece, town hall meetings, being in front of it, because we're going to have a significant challenge when it comes to the Welland Park High School. And I believe that everybody understands that. That's going to be very significant, just as much as this is. But when you look at the utilization rates, in Scenario One, you take all of those portables and they're gone and you bring all those kids inside. You then reduce Lakeview only to four. Sarasota Middle then has zero, at an 86% utilization rate, if all of those students districted in there, without the other obligations go. If you look at Scenario Two, Ashton is still at 116% overcapacity. Lakeview stays the same at 113%, as that they still have four portables. Sarasota Middle has none. If you look at Three, which I've had some comments and people have contacted me, Ashton still stays at over 105%. Lakeview's at 93. Wilkinson then gets 11 portables that go, they go up to 126. So now we're not affecting just three schools, we're affecting four schools. And obviously, that's more tumultuous for everybody, in my opinion, as it then turns into a whole nother scenario, along with the staff in regards to all that. So when I, ultimately, when I look at this and I look at the school and I look at the scenario-based, you know, I think moving forward, I think that we can do, I think, especially with the community, I know we can do a better job with that. Not that we didn't do, because it was a nine-month process, we had lots of stakeholders. But I would like to see it a little bit more. But you're looking at, with Scenario One, we're going to open the school at potentially 86%. And there will be parents that I know that I've talked to from Tatum Ridge that would like to school choice into there, because they're direct shot down the rain road. As well as, you look at Scenario Two, we're only at the new school at 53%. So you're looking at half of the occupancy. So when I look at the numbers and for those reasons I stated, and I appreciate the thorough work that was put into this, is, you know, I'll be supporting Scenario One, as it's what's best for the district, even though that I know, because I've been there, done that, this is a hard, hard decision to make, because it affects a lot of people. Superintendent Connor?
No, I want to thank the board for the feedback and just in reflecting of this process, it's been a long, arduous process, it's always a very difficult time. And I do respect what our staffs are going through. You know, this is affecting not only the families and the communities, but the staffs at the schools. And there's some anxiety about what's to happen. And we promise that as this recommendation moves forward, that we're going to work hand-in-hand with each of those schools in collaboration with SCTA to ensure that there's a clear process and people have a clear understanding, because I know that that's very much needed. In terms of the feedback around communication, I know that you can never communicate enough. And I do believe that we can always do a better job of that. I do want to thank the communications team with really keeping up the website up to date. And I understand that, you know, we all have very busy lives and people just aren't going to pop up on the website. And so as we look at all of the strategies that we have employed to communicate, I think there are opportunities for us to do that better, because there will be more changes that are coming, because Sarasota County is growing. We were at an Affordable Housing Summit this morning and we've seen the numbers and they're coming in droves here. And that's a good thing, but with good things, there are challenges that we have to address. I think there's an opportunity in our existing policy of how we have boundary advisory committees and how that goes, because it is such a limited subset of representation of parents, teachers, administrators, that we may find opportunity as a board to redefine and redesign this policy, so that there is, we're casting a wider net, we're getting more input. So I challenge all of us, the board and myself, to maybe take a look at that policy, to see how we could draft something more inclusive, so that we mitigate the issue of communication as best we can. But thank you for that feedback.
Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you, Mr. Enos. I would like to address some of the concerns that Mr. Edwards brought up, because many of those were the concerns that were put in emails to me. And these emails started coming like two weeks ago. And I don't like to wait till just a board meeting. And I, as a board member and I, as a former employee, this is how I handle things. When I get a concern, I immediately pick up the phone and I call Mr. Connor. And I say, this has been brought to my attention. And, because I have enough trust that he is going to follow up. I had the bus concern, when parents said, my kid's going to be on the bus for 40 minutes. I immediately called Mr. Connor, I said, is this true? I said, because that is a concern. He'll take care of it, he'll get with staff. That's, that is what I feel my role is. I don't get into the nitty-gritty things. My role is to represent this community, represent students, to make sure they get the best education. I send the problems to Mr. Connor or the concerns to him, because that is his job and with his staff. So I had the bus, talked about the A rating, people wanting to be able to choice, the communication, and also our staff that is going to be affected by this change, this reduction. And to have that compassion, because Ashton has always had such a reputation of being a cohesive school. Most of our schools do have that. So he let me know, Robin, I've got it taken care of, I'm meeting with the union, we're going to get all that information, let teachers know what their options are, what their options are with their own children. So a lot of these things, they're getting taken care of as they're made aware. So it's, things are being addressed. But I do think, if there's been some problems and our board policy is still in the old, which is, that's on us as a board. We need to make sure that we're ahead of that game, so we're making the right decisions and giving direction to the superintendent with our policies being updated with what's going to be happening. Because this, our town is growing and it's growing rapidly. And it's growing in directions, you know, that it really hasn't. And I want to make sure that our schools that are being affected, that really are landlocked, and we have a lot of schools. You look at Southside Elementary, eight acres and it's, there's nowhere to go. You could go up if you build a new building, but I don't even know by state statute if you could do that. So to not, you know, to make sure there's enough still for some room for families to choice in or if they move in, because neighborhoods turn over. I live in a neighborhood now, I, my husband and I were the young ones when we moved now. Most other people were older and their kids didn't go to Brentwood or McIntosh or Sarasota. Now we're the old ones and all these young families have moved in and they go to Brentwood and they love the school, or they go, they've choice to Fruitville or Lakeview, wherever their parents are willing to drive them. So there's so many options, but I want to make sure that the schools that are being affected have the room for those options. But everything that I get as a board member, I don't wait two weeks. I immediately talk to Mr. Connor and have the trust of the staff, who I think has done a wonderful job with everything, to make sure our students and our staff, because they're, you know, it's really affecting the Ashton staff and I think we need to address that. And I know you have. So, thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes, I think that it's fair to say that I, Mrs. Marinelli certainly has the right to do her job the way she sees fit in her seat. I feel and always have to, I was elected by the constituents and I need to hear what they say and validate that they're being heard. And that's just my particular style. No offense to Mrs. Marinelli passing it along to the superintendent, I don't, that's entirely up to her. My point was that these are valid concerns. I repeated them publicly, so that the public heard that they were being heard and that it wasn't just a referral of an email to the superintendent, but that it was a public validation, that we are going to continue to focus on those concerns and make sure that our customers are satisfied with their choice.
Ms. Barker?
Thank you. I just wanted to also bring to attention, we've spoken a lot about Ashton and that is a wonderful community that is very special. But I'd love for us to also remember that Lakeview is being equally impacted. And even though, I think maybe the difference is that at Lakeview, because the Sky Ranch neighborhood is currently districted to Lakeview, it's been sort of in the periphery for us for a couple of years. Nothing is surprising, we've been having these discussions at Lakeview for at least two years now. I've been speaking with the principal there about, how do we continue to keep Lakeview a vibrant, strong community? How do we continue our service as, you know, I was the PTO president, how do we, how do we, and most of our PTO was in areas that we suspected could be redistricted. So we were trying to recruit PTO members close by to the school. So I just, I just would love for us to remember that whatever supports we give to Ashton, which I think is a great idea, Lakeview is also pulling huge, huge numbers of students and will go through similar, you know, changes and challenges. So, you know.
Absolutely.
Help a girl out.
Ms. Ziegler?
I appreciate that. And I think, you know, overall, again, as I mentioned before, change is hard and so there's a lot of unknown and with that is, creates angst. But I, one thing I know that, and I hope that we will do, and again, this is the first time this district has had to do this in decades. And so what I also think with change comes opportunity, there's a lot of opportunity to hone in and be laser-focused on these concerns, as Mr. Edwards has highlighted. And I think, and I thank the staff for coming. One, I just love seeing that support and that passion and I don't want that to be lost on any of us, I don't think it is. And so as Mr. Connor had mentioned, that we will be keeping a close eye on not just Ashton, but also Lakeview and those families, but also that staff, because we do have more of these coming in front of us. And so I think, not that I want, and I apologize, I'm not saying they're our guinea pig, but we're going to be laser-focused on providing those supports, but also provides us the opportunity to be more visible or have more full visibility in the future ones. Because I do think, while this is incredibly hard for the families that are impacted, there's nothing, there's no way to take that away. The ones that we have coming up in the future, I think, are going to be equally as challenging. And any ways that we can support the staff, support the community, I'm sorry, support our families, but also educate our community, I think we'll be doing tenfold in the future. But, you know, I'm optimistic. I think that we have really good systems in place. But I also don't want any member of staff or the community to, I always want them to come forward and share those concerns, because they have great ideas a lot of times that sometimes we're not privy to.
Mr. Connor?
Yeah, I think for the feedback and just to reassure Ms. Barker, we are absolutely, I know there's been a lot of focus on Ashton, but Lakeview rightfully deserves just as much support there and we are on top of that. So I want to make sure that's clear. Also, we do have staff here and the purpose of staff being here today is to address some of the concerns that have been brought up. So around transportation, around choice, I don't want to forego this opportunity and cast a vote before everyone feels comfortable. So we talked about ghost rides, we talked about kindergarten students with eighth graders. We are prepared to address that publicly, so that people understand that we are listening, we are hearing that, we are addressing things as they come up. And we're prepared to do that. I also want to say, in terms of transportation too, well, I won't throw the wrinkle in there, but, you know, there's a whole legislation in the next couple of years where we're going to have to change start times of elementary, middle and high. And we have already forecasted what that's going to look like. But you can only communicate so much and timing is everything, right? And you want to make sure after a referendum, a presidential election and rebounding of a new K-8 school, there's a lot, there's a lot of saturation in terms of just information overload. But we keep all of this cognizant. But again, we're prepared if we need to answer any questions before we cast a vote.
Ms. Ziegler?
But hinging on that, because I think the transportation was one of the things that I know has been mentioned up here and was something that I had written down and it actually, we have had conversations similarly about the length of time of various routes. So can we, I'd love to get a better understanding of what that duration time since we have, since you put it out there, if we can have staff come up and explain that, one, how they have One, how they evaluate it. Two, you know, I think of other districts, we're a long district. There are some very large districts. And again, this is the first one we've had. So there are some of our, if you look at some of our attendance zones, there are long, I mean, I mean, I think it's north of Fruitville, they're districted to Booker. I mean, I think about like how far that would be. So I don't know, like what, what are, what is the range of times that we look at? And I think we all typically are thinking lower, you know, elementary, but the, the length of time and what we do to try to mitigate against those long transportation times.
So Dr., I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kemp and Dr. Little here for transportation.
Yes, through the superintendent. We'll start with transportation, but I also want to thank you all for the process, the process that, that we've had to go through. It's never, it's never easy. It's very difficult and we understand that. I also want to thank Ms. Barker, because you may not realize this, but she was actually part of the boundary advisory committee for the, for the majority until she, until she won her seat. So she understood firsthand what was going on with the boundary advisory committee process based on your five point two, your policy five point two and what we were trying to do and understanding the variables that associate with redistricting. We definitely want to, I always want to try to find how can we, how can we communicate better? What else can we do to make sure people understand we include as many as we can in that process as we make decisions? But there was four major themes and the team can be ready for that. There was four major themes that we, that we heard information about. Some of it was misinformation, some of it, some that spread in the community. So we want to do, we want to address the transportation and the AI issue, which is not exactly, not exactly accurate. So the transportation and we wanted to also talk about the decimation, the comments about decimation and what this can do 40% to Ashton. Keep in mind Ashton was 139% capacity. Quite frankly, shouldn't have really got that high and we shouldn't allowed it to get that high. But 139% capacity, bringing that down to 91% makes it more manageable level of service the way it's supposed to operate for, for that particular facility. But, but I want to talk about transportation. I want to talk about the projected enrollment. Diane, we actually ran actual enrollment based on budget and figures that will look at actual enrollment for Ashton since that kept coming up. She can share those with you and you'll see that the 40% reduction absolutely does not decimate the enrollment that's, that's actual enrollment that's coming. So Mr. Keith Little will talk about transportation and just basically the process and how those projected routes were generated.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Kemp. Good, good morning, I believe it still is to everyone. Transportation, as you know, Ms. Ziegler, as you said, there's, there's multiple facets of, of how we have to do our routes. We have some schools start at 7:30, some start at 8, some at 8:15, some at 8:30. Our primary goal is to address from a drop off perspective at a first tier school, like a high school to the second tier school within 60 minutes. So if we drop off at say Riverview High School at 7:15, that bus is going to leave, go pick up their first stop and that's when our timing starts from there until we drop off at the next school, which depending on the tier, it could be 10 or 15 minutes before bell time is, is our goal time. So we may look from total beginning to end somewhere in about 30 to 40 minutes depending on where those, those schools are. We certainly are evaluating every day because our drivers are driving those routes and making recommendations on what they're seeing with road conditions. All of our buses are equipped with GPS, so we have real time data when, when the bus stops are happening, when they're delivering to school. And so we're constantly always evaluating those. One of the things that we've done as well, which starts to speak to the scenarios is as I've moved into transportation and taken that over, one of my goals has been we need to route and plan for traffic in January, February, March, right? Not, not August and September and May. We need to know real time traffic information. We have to build that in. This year, we made a very specific effort to do that with student load times with the tablets and the scanning and with traffic to make sure that every driver knew that you may be early to your stops in August and September, but come January, February, March, you're going to be running on time. And we'd rather be early and slow down and be safe than be rushing in January, February, March and be in an accident. So when we receive the projected numbers for our scenarios that we created, we actually go into our computer software, which is quite antiquated, but we create the stops. We, we create them, then we put them together as routes as we see how the map goes together. The, the software does a little bit of assistance in that, but not as much as certainly I would like. I'm a big proponent of technology, but it has to work for us. We can't work for it. So we put all that data into there and then the computer will use, our current software uses Google Maps to do an estimation, just like if you were going on vacation, to tell us how long it would go. That's when we go and we actually physically look at those segments and say, is that a realistic time? Because if we put it in at, you know, five o'clock in the morning, traffic from here to Riverview takes 30 seconds, but at the time that Phillip is getting out, it might take you 15 minutes, right, to get there? So we take all of that into consideration and make those adjustments. Then once that route is done and that route starts running, again, everything is GPSed. So we're constantly always evaluating that. If, if a parent calls with a complaint about the bus always running late or not getting to school on time, we're looking at those routes in real time to make adjustments to make sure we're getting to school on time. If we have to add routes to do that, then we will as our resources permit, right? So we will, if we have the drivers where we can add them, if we have the buses, we can add them. We will always add routes to make sure that our goal is on time and safe and to minimize the amount of time. Certainly, we might have an expectation for a high school there that is a little longer than we might for a kindergartner. But we also do have, Booker High School has some countywide stops that we do through pocket stops that will tend to push things a little longer. Oak Park is another one that we struggle with, but those are still routes that we're constantly evaluating, always in real time to make sure that we're doing the best we can based on the circumstances to get the kids home and to school as quickly and safely as we can.
The projections and the MFMAN, Dr. Little?
Yeah.
And we communicated this to the boundary advisory committee and we'll do a better job next time, making sure people understand. These are based on projections. When you take the geocoded data set of kids, you take the new school from the center of the school and you expand out where the projected transportation times, cost, all that is based on an assumption that any student over two miles, that they're, all students are going to ride. And we know that's not always the case, but make, he doesn't have, we don't have a crystal ball, who's going to actually opt into the transportation opportunity and who's not? So on the projection piece, we'll make sure that we communicate better that these are simply projections and they're based on if everybody outside in that geocoded data set that was over two miles from the school decided to take the bus, that that's how many stops that would be needed and routes would be needed. Constantly, we adjust that now. We adjust it now all the time based on the movement and the enrollment with the buses. But one thing I've taken away from this transportation piece and this process is that we will do a better job making sure they understand the projections and the processes and that, that it's just, it's approximation and projection, it's not exact. When it comes to ride times or posting something about potential ride times, I would rather post a higher time and we, you know, we over, we, you know, we under promise, we over deliver. So if it's less than that, then we win, you know, as far as trying to, trying on the perception piece. But they're definitely projections. There's no way to know who's going to choose to do it and who's not. We know who could and we made the projection based on that assumption. So thank you, Dr. Little. Appreciate that.
Through the chair. So there was another issue around transportation that was brought up and, you know, it reminded me of my opportunity to actually shadow one of our bus drivers early last year for Laurel Nakomis, which is a K eight school. And I happened to sit with the kindergarteners at the front of the bus. And while I absolutely understand a parent's anxiety around having K eight, sometimes I worry more about eighth and eighth being on the bus near each other than I am the K eight. But could you explain our process around kindergartners through eighth grade on, on our buses? Because we do that currently with our current K eight.
Oh, yes, sir. Our expectation for our drivers in attendance in that case is that they're separating the kids by grade levels. The elementary kids are sitting closer to the front of the bus. The middle school kids are sitting towards the back. That's, that's our expectation. We have our route supervisors for those schools who are often checking that. We have on the vast majority of our buses, five cameras now, so we can always look back and make sure that those practices are being followed on a, you know, just on a, an every now and then basis. We don't do it every day, but we want to make sure. And if we ever have any issues on a bus like that, that's one of the things that we look at first, right? We go to our videos, we pull that, we have the audio, we can see where the kid's sitting where they're supposed to. Are the drivers in attendance, meeting our expectations as far as that process goes? They have seating charts that dictate that. So if there's a substitute driver that comes onto the bus, the kids, the names are usually up on the bulkhead somewhere with a sticker or something that has the kids' names on it. If there are changes that are made, they're submitting updated documents to us for that so that we can give that to any substitute driver. So we do our best because we do know that, that is a wide, wide range of kids, but, but we want to do the best we can to make sure that, that they're in the right place. And quite often what you will see is some of the older kids will mentor and protect some of the younger kids from, you know, the students who, who maybe are looking for, you know, someone to pick on or something like that. So it actually works out pretty good. It provides some opportunities for those kid, those older kids to take some kids under their wing too, so.
Superintendent Connor?
Thank you. So while we have Dr. Little up here, is there any other transportation questions? Because I would like to address choice. I know, Mr. Edwards, you brought a concern around choice that you would like to hear. But before I, before we allow Dr. Little to go back to his seat, is there any other transportation questions?
I, I would just say, I, I think that for the general public and specifically parents who had that question, just hearing the thought and care that you put into it, they still might disagree and they still might be fearful, but at least they feel heard and that there's a, a really precise methodology behind it. And that often is what people need to hear, that it's just not as random as it feels. And, and the second piece that I, I just want to, it has nothing to do with transportation, but I, I really appreciate what Mrs. Barker said about Lakeview and, and the whole, all the schools being affected. And that's really what I meant, that our board would pay extra attention to all the schools that are being affected to make sure that any of the particular issues that may bubble up, and I'm sure there will be some, that we're on top of it and, and handling them as we normally do with the utmost of customer service.
Absolutely. And just to piggyback on what Dr. Kemp said earlier too, as we get closer to the summer and we start getting enrollment and kids start requesting access to the bus, all of those things that we projected now will, will change to more real time type items because we'll know the number of kids. We'll be able to assign the buses and make adjustments based on actual numbers versus projected numbers. And even then, in the beginning of the school year, we're always going to be looking at that data to, to evaluate and make sure that we're not seeing an anomaly in one place where we projected that it was going to be a 25 minute ride and because they're doing construction on the diverging diamond that closed the road down or something, that it's adding another 20 minutes for a long period of time. If that's going to be a long-term issue, we'll address those issues to make sure those ride times aren't consistent like that. We want to keep them as short as possible, as safe as possible and get them there on time, so.
Thank you. I think that's great.
All right. If I could ask Ms. Wheeler, if you'll come up and Diane Campanati around enrollment, because I know these two will probably go hand in hand. If we're talking about choice, it's predicated on enrollment and also Ms. O'Day has been a very integral part of the conversations around how we'll be handling choice. But Mr. Edwards, for the sake of the record, could you, I can't remember exactly what you asked about choice.
There, there were families that, that had spoken to several, as a matter of fact, that were going to, instead of going to Sky Ranch as their districted school, wanted to choice back to Ashton specifically for all of the reasons that have, we've all heard. And, but at the same time, what their fear was that in two years from now, they're going to have to choice into Sarasota Middle to stay with their cohort who are districted going into that, to that, that school. So what my hope is, is that if a family chose to, at this moment, choice into Ashton and was there, that they would automatically, per their choice, want to go to Saras-, would be approved to go to Sarasota Middle with their cohort.
So I'm going to talk about enrollment and our projections first because that'll be key in the choice numbers as well. So we are in the middle of our enrollment and projection meetings right now. In fact, we have some today that we're sitting in on. But Finance Department asked me to give them the numbers and the boundaries for the different scenarios that we've been presenting, we presented you. And they did some calculations for projected enrollment numbers for the next five years. And so I have Ashton's numbers and this is based on scenario one, since that's the scenario you're approving today. So for, for the next year, 2025, 26, and, and they use a formula where they, they take the students enrolled at the school, they take the students living in the zone, they take choice students, they take birth rates. So this is all based on their formula. For 25, 26, they have a projected enrollment of 614 students, which puts them at 84% capacity. For 26, 27, they have 623, which puts them at 85%. 27, 28, 641, which puts them at 87%. 28, 29 is 667, which puts them at 91%. And then 29, 30, 688, which puts them at 94%. And again, this is compared to their permanent capacity. So this would be removing the portables and, and bringing that capacity down to their permanent. So it, it brings them to a more manageable level of service and then opens up for programs like pre-K and choice. And I'm going to let Millie now talk about choice.
Yep. So just before Millie comes on, Mr. Edwards, you were referring to a package deal essentially. So if I decided to choice into Ashton, that means I also want to stay with that cohort and go to Sarasota Middle. So currently, obviously, that's not in our policy and procedure. And the only thing limiting us from honoring that on the spot is identifying the capacity and making sure that if we do something like that, that we're not negating the whole point of the redistricting process and staffing for Sky Ranch and also staffing for Ashton and Sarasota Middle School. So with the enrollment meetings that we're doing right now and the staffing process we'll be going through, we'll be able to better say if that's something that we can entertain and if we can't, we'll be able to explain explicitly why. So there is more metrics involved to being able to honoring that or not. So I just wanted to start with that. But I want Ms. Wheeler to explain in more detail what the options are with choice that already stand based on our policy and procedure. So I hope that answers the first question.
If I may, it sounds like just based upon what Ms. Campanati had said is that we'd be under capacity, at least in Ashton, to accommodate pre-K. And, and so if, and maybe it's a board issue and that's also why I brought it up in this forum, that perhaps it does require us to amend or create a specific policy for this time period and this redistricting to say that that's okay. But we do have a school and schools that are already overcapacity and would only be potentially overcapacity for a specific period of time because of those choice students. So even though I know you're going through these numbers, it still may be a good idea to allow for the process to occur so the cohorts can stay the same and the parents get a little extra relief that I don't have to go through this again in two years and wonder if that's, if I'm going to make it.
And the goal would be to honor that. And the goal would be to amend our policy and procedure, but it would go back to the capacity. And with scenario one, it brings Ashton down to 91%. And our, our capacity threshold when we're making decisions about choice is 90%. And we do, it's not that we don't look past that, right? Because we can, especially in situations like this, but then we're really talking about physical seats, right? And we aren't going to have portable. So it does change the amount that we can entertain, but if we can entertain that for these families, surely we're going to. I just can't answer that today. But it's a great idea and it's something we'll vet along with the metrics and if we can honor it, we will. And if we can't, then there'll be very hard data as to why we can't do that.
Sounds like we're getting a little closer.
But it also, you know, and to, to Mr. Edwards' point, based on the numbers that Ms. Campanati just stated is that we would be under potentially for next year, the capacity of 90%. So based on our policy, there's a potential that they could school choice back in based on our current policy since it said, and I believe you said it would be around 84% next year. So again, I think that just for those parents, based on our, based on our stuff, that we would be able to.
Yeah, I think the issue is really going to be SMS.
Yeah. Exactly. But for, just for the parents that would like to go, obviously, it sounds like we-
And that's what Ms. Wheeler is going to explain.
Yeah, we do have some limits.
But she just can't honor something not in policy and procedure right now and without having the right hard numbers, we can't honor that. But we, it is a good idea. We will vet it and get it right back to you with what we can do. So without that special consideration, Ms. Wheeler will explain what we actually can do based on today. we actually can do based on today.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So just to follow up on what Ms. Comanati mentioned, those are, we haven't, as a team, reviewed those numbers yet. And I explained this to the Boundary Advisory Committee, and I want to explain it to everyone here and to the public, that we do have a policy for choice, and so much of it is statutorily driven, but it is very complicated. So that number is where we start, and then we discuss it as a team. Because sometimes what the number doesn't tell us are programmatic elements that only the principal or people who are part of that school would know. Things like specialized programs, or maybe there's a construction project going on. So that is a starting point. And then, and then we discuss that might not be finalized, certainly won't be finalized until we know what the actual boundary vote is. When that is finalized, we do put that out. In fact, statutorily, we have to update those capacity numbers every 12 weeks for the public, and that is available on our website. But as a choice process, I do also want to reiterate that we start at that 90%. We look at programmatic elements. We set those numbers the best we can, and then remind you that all families are permitted to apply, so we have a waitlist. So if our estimates were off, we can reevaluate. And if additional capacity opens up, then we will allow that opportunity before school starts to reach out to those families and offer them an opportunity to take that seat. In addition to that, I do want to remind everybody that Sarasota is a little bit unique in the fact that we do value and prioritize choice for all of our families and all of our schools. So even the ones where maybe we don't have space, we try to open something, even if it's only a few seats. And that doesn't happen in all districts across the state of Florida. And I know that it's challenging because we, as a district, are always trying to make decisions that are best for every student. But as a parent, when we have those conversations, I know that you're only thinking about your baby. But we do take all of these things into consideration, and we will work hard with these families to honor the best that we can. It's not going to be guaranteed. Not every family is going to get back in, but we know that that's a concern. And we are also planning on giving a priority to those families, a waiting in the lottery. Again, it won't be guaranteed, but we recognize that the remaining at a school of origin is important to some of these families, and we do want to hear them and be able to honor that as an option.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. Thank you, Dr. Kemp. Superintendent Connor, thank you for that extra information. I believe that is significantly helpful, especially for our parents. Thank you, Ms. O'Day, also. Is there any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, if you go ahead and refresh and please vote.
Just refreshing.
Thank you. The votes have been cast. It is 5 to 0 as it passed in reference to recommendation number one. Thank you for everybody's opportunity, for everybody's input and staff and the hard work. And I know as we go forward, there's always going to be adjustments could be made. So that, we'll go ahead to board member comments. Go ahead and we'll start. Ms. Barker.
Thanks, Tim.
Just shuffling it up.
Sorry. I will just say, as someone who, whose family is going to be a part of this new school, I am really, really excited for the community that we're going to build together. I know it is going to be exceptional. I know it is going to continue our tradition of excellence. And I look forward to what's to come, so, thank you.
Ms. Marinelli.
I want to thank everybody, our staff, and especially the, all the schools that are affected and trying to work through this the best they can. And I do want to thank Mrs. Barker that she will be part of that, and she, she can be the point person. Because you'll be experiencing with your children. So thank you. Thank you, staff. This is tough, and we've got more coming, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ziegler.
I just want to thank everyone for their involvement. And again, I, my hat's off to, I know it's hard, but I, again, I think there's a lot of opportunity as we move forward. And as we look at the future ones, I think all the lessons learned or any way we can improve, I know we all had ears open and are ready to do so. And also, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
I'm ready for it.
I just want to also thank the staff. I know that really getting into the nitty-gritty and the precise details of what is in the best interest of the district is really our ultimate goal. I do think that it's important for our families to be heard and to be recognized. And I appreciate everybody taking the extra step and making that happen. And I know that we will continue to do that as we, as we move forward. I also want to just reiterate a big thank you to the schools who have been functioning in overcapacity and in portables and continuing to deliver quality work. And I think that a big thank you to those schools while, while we've been dealing with those issues is an important thank you. Lastly, I just want to say once again, I am so excited about Sky Ranch as an opportunity. I hope people from all over the county choice into that school because it is complete state-of-the-art. Mrs. Hannan is an amazing principal. There's so much excitement and activity about it being brand-new and, and the programs that are going to be offered. And I can't recommend it enough, but I just feel that for those families that were trying to make those difficult decisions, that we've done everything we could. So happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. And it's a testament to the families and really to those schools. If you look at it, people are moving there. That's why there's overcapacity, because people know that the success of Sarasota County Schools and those specific schools of their commitment to education in the county. And again, you know, it's a very hard decision. And on behalf of the board, have all of our staff well-deserved rest. Happy Thanksgiving. We've been through hurricanes and everything else. I know people will be catching up. The other thing, too, is for the families and staff that will be traveling, please come back safe, as we'll need you back at school to begin the rest of the year, as we're already crazy as four months in. So with that, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Some of it.
Motion, Ms. Ziegler, second.
Second.
Ms. Marinelli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned until our next scheduled board meeting, I believe, which is December 10.